I recall the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee Finance Subcommittee to work. And we will start with questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I also would like to announce that the meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with the Templeton Community TV, or TCTV, and is provided to both Templeton and Phillipston for cable TV access as well as Phillipston outway. Tonight we really have one item on our agenda as the Finance Subcommittee meeting. When we left here last Wednesday, Mr. Mason asked if we would agree that we would meet as a Finance Subcommittee again because the looming 112 situation. And we would need to convene possibly to address whatever the number was that the state had since given us. I know that the state has given us a number. And Ms. Geiser, you have forwarded that to everybody. But I will let you, if you don't mind, just giving everybody an update of what the state has decided our 112 number should be. If you want, you can leave a letter, whatever makes sense. And everybody should have had this email today.
So the letter is from Jay Sullivan, the Associate Commissioner at the Department of Ed. It is telling the district they may spend up to $1,648,907 in each month for fiscal FY '20. It says this intramonthly budget is 1/12 of the regional school district's budget for the current fiscal year. If you take that $1 million and multiply that by 12, it equals our FY '20 certified, but if that we have currently.
Okay, and so we need our treasurer to send out assessment letters. Is it monthly that we send? I'm just trying to understand the process now. To each town based upon the number of assessments and...
Yeah, she said that we have invoices monthly to announce.
Questions, comments? I know I would just start off with, we did not anticipate the state coming back with funding us our FY '20 request, which was part of the reason we're here, is we were thinking we may have to discuss further cuts to the budget changes that we'd need to make. Support a lower number. Anyone want to throw out some comments or thoughts on the state's number and what it reads?
Okay. So there was no other indication from the state whether that's... I mean, could it go lower after, if it went to December, I guess is what I'm asking?
And that's a very good question, I was thinking of that. So if, for happenstance, we don't get to a certified agreed-upon number with the towns, and the state does come in for some timeframe, would they come back and say, "Oh, just kidding, that's not the number." You know, "We're giving you something lower." Higher would be fine, lower, but it would be devastating at that point. And we've got our guidance, they won't answer anything.
This is as much information as we've got.
Well, then that's what we go with.
So just as a question, just to make, because this whole process, I know that you have been working on for many weeks with the state. We've provided them, I know with a bunch of detailed information. We've provided them with information on original budget number, and then with the number that we recertified at. So they know the difference between the two. So that was all available to them upfront, plus some certain other information that they've probably asked for two and three times over.
Yep.
Right, so I think as far as any potential discussion of cuts needed to support this 112 budget, obviously, at this point, we don't need to address that. Is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
So I think that just brings up our next point of business is where we are. We've gotten some nice detailed information. A new line item budget that Ms. Geiser is preparing for, so we can see where our numbers are. Information on school choice, I see, spending here. And some information on class sizes, that, what they would look like in different scenarios. So if you want to speak to that a little bit, maybe, I'm kind of...
Yeah, so, let me go to... So we, as of last week, last meeting, decision was to take my four existing elementary teachers. Is that right? Oh, I guess, I'm sorry. We're going to try hard to, trying to figure this out. But anyway, anyway, the, what we did is we looked at, we took those teachers, we put one essentially at Phillipston, three were at TC. And you have, you have that, that handout, it's hard for me now to show you because there are reasons this one off, I don't know why. But the, what it did by giving the school choice, the 42 school choice students into Phillipston, is that it balanced on the class sizes, okay? So ultimately, as my, as the email that went out today with the letter, the class sizes are there. But, you know, it's 28-ish first grade, 27 second grade, 27 third grade, 28 fourth grade, 30, which I know is another part of the conversation, coming up for the fifth grade. Okay, so with that being said, one of the questions was asked, not only this today, or earlier today, but was asked several weeks ago, is what would happen, what would the class sizes look like if you just let everything the same and the school choice kid, you know, everything just literally stayed the same, and you put three teach, again, the same configuration, three at every grade level, one through five, and one at Phillipston. You have that, that's this, this right here, we're starting to, you know, some reason for it there. But you would have at Templeton, Templeton Center, 30, let's see, hold on. 30 at first grade, 29 second grade, 31 at third grade, 31 at third grade, uh, fourth grade, 34 and fifth grade, and of course Phillipston would stay what it traditionally had at 15, 19, 19, 17, 20 and 15. You have that there. So that is the, one of the impetus of having to move students to, between the two. If you took, left three at Templeton Center and brought one, or you, or have one at Phillipston, it balanced off as best we could possibly do in the circumstance of class sizes. So I'm going to just hold that, I mean, I'm just before, let that kind of, you know, sink in, or if there are any questions before I move on to next questions.
Just a comment, I'm catching up here because I have not been here for two weeks due to the fact that I was out of the country. But it's, the letter went out, I was unaware of the letter that went out. And I received a phone call from somebody above the letter. I then went to the district website, I didn't see it. It just restates what we had.
Yeah.
But it didn't, but I didn't have a copy of it. So I'm just requesting as we go through this situation, that if there is a letter that goes out to the community, that we also have a copy. That's basically what I had to say. The school committee made the choice to take the school choice kids and move them to Phillipston, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just, because in the letter it says it was determined, I just wanted to know, determine that.
So the numbers on this sheet where it says all school, all, yeah. So the numbers in that column that shows Phillipston's, includes some school choice kids?
Yes.
That are there?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure. Because when I look in, I try to make sure, because when you look at the actual Phillipston numbers, you know, I just, I think it's important to like clarify that, because I know there's some, you know, non-kids, so I just want to make sure.
This is an important visual, because this is what really drove us to make the decision that equity in the classroom was something that we needed to be very concerned with. And needing to move students to make the classroom sizes more equitable was certainly, I know personally, something that I factored very heavily into the decision and discussion. I am concerned, and I know we all said it at the last meeting, is there unintended consequences for these actions? We have, obviously, a group of kids, the 42, 43, whatever the number is, that will be uprooted from Templeton Center and moved to Phillipston. And they have been embedded in those classrooms with their friends for anywhere from one to potentially four years. And I am concerned, obviously, with the impact to those kids and what it means for them to be not just uprooted from their friends, but also moving to a new building. Additionally, I am curious if we may have a number, because the other unintended consequences if a family chooses not to go to Phillipston for whatever reason, there's the potential that other siblings that may be in middle and high school might be pulled as well. And I think that's a reality that we hadn't really looked at or discussed. And I'm curious if we have a number on how many school choice siblings there are in middle and high school.
So there are 24 families that would be newly affected by, so they have, by family, I mean that it doesn't matter size, but they're, one of their children going to Templeton Center as a school choice student. There are, I think I might have just said, there's 24 families. That's a grand total when you add in all the siblings, right, of families. And out of all the kids that 24 families represent, is roughly, is 34 total students. Let me turn it over, because I can't pull down this stuff because there's actually names on it. It's at the very bottom.
So we have, just because I know, so we have, we're planning on...
62, 62 affected students.
I was going to say, because we have 42 moving over.
Sorry.
So 60, so if we are moving 42 kids, there's 20 additional students in middle and high school that could potentially be impacted by a family's decision not to choose into the district anymore.
We did not take into account, because quite frankly, the information we can turn over fairly quickly, that it doesn't even count the school choice families that only have one child. You know, just the singles, you know, just the one child in the first grade, for example. We just did not have enough time to cull that out, in time to file, you know, anything else. But...
Because that, to me, is very disconcerting. We've had a lot of discussions about school choice and how we, on top of our EMD that we live off of, school choice is something else that we do rely and lean on heavily to fund our budget. And we knew this was a risk. And I think, for me, I would like to engage in some discussion here, to talk about what that means and what could we do to mitigate, if there is anything we can do to mitigate any risk. And I think, you know, in looking at the budget and how we have the budget put together, you know, is there anything we can do to move, change, free up resources to address the teaching issue at the elementary school? May have unintended consequences for other things, but I think we need to at least look at it and have the discussion. Anyone want to throw out, if they've been thinking of any ideas?
Just, do we know how, do we accept new middle and high school, school choice?
Yes.
For this upcoming year? I'm just wondering how that balances out of, you know, potential losses that we might have.
So we have accepted the, I would say any and all, up to this point, school choice students at the middle and high school level. Going back to my other, I think I threw a copy of it. So...
It's down 22.
I'm sorry?
New document on the agenda that we handed out last week as well, that shows school choice applications and which ones have been accepted.
So it looks like 22, if I head it up real quick, is what we've accepted in six through 12. But how many did we lose that graduated?
We lost, I was, I forgot.
Does that mean that we got net debt?
You talked about the seniors.
The seniors, yeah. Because that, if we net that, then we'll see for the true.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be 16 seniors.
How many school choice?
16 school choice.
16?
Yeah.
So if we lost 16 seniors, that leaves us with a net of six school choice students.
And that doesn't count the students who were accepted into school choice, when we talked about this, who were school choice into our district, and they were accepted into school choice and will go and represent whatever community they came from. We're trying, that list usually comes later, just every kid accepted, so.
So I think to your question, it's about a net of six students, which in that $5,000 benchmark is $30,000. That's not much of a cushion. And that's if we lose six kids. I don't know if we've received any formal notices, not just questions of families' numbers.
Well, we don't, there's no formal notice, they just, we just know when their records requests come.
But we have received.
We have received, folks have, I spoke, you know, spoken to them that they've, they're going to, yes.
So the school choice applicants that we have at the elementary, or any of them showing interest in coming to Phillipston? I mean, we have a lot, there's significant non-school choice kids, I think, that are already in Phillipston. So are there any of those applicants that are looking to get into Phillipston? Or is that not even a question?
Generally, folks have, when the folks have us looking through, they either say, you know, you know, okay, or maybe, you know, maybe just for a year or so, I mean, they're, this is their, their comments. We won't know until, I just won't know that until they, until either they are here or they're not. We don't, they don't have to formally tell us that they're not going to be school choice. We just receive the register. And that's Southern through Chelsea that we are watching and we know, we know the students are, that are here, obviously, in what they were saying, so we'll be keeping an eye on that.
Do, at what point in time, just because I'm not familiar with, do we start to get those requests or those, those records in? And obviously, records, do they come later in the summer?
Some schools don't, especially elementary schools, we don't receive their, their record requests sometimes until September or October, because they don't have guidance.
Yeah, they don't have people working in the summer, so...
Right, so they just kind of stack up, and then you just, all of a sudden, receive them.
Yeah, so there's no good measure for us to say that always buy them. First we get them.
Right, no, no.
I mean, typically, the registrar at each school district should be registered students over the summer, and they should have that form, though that won't be drafted yet. But I'm not sure, oh, yeah, that kind of sense.
I just keep looking on the application list. So I'm just looking through the online applications now, and there's a very small, a couple, like, there's two that I'm looking at right now that are requesting Phillipston. There are some folks that are in Royalston that may consider or choose to go to Phillipston. Two that I'm looking at now that have actually asked to be... So if we were, but again, so I guess I need to clarify, the pending applications started coming in months ago, I'm assuming. We don't know how long necessarily, I mean, many of these may have already been school choice somewhere else. Depending, it's possible.
Sure.
Back to January, could source school choice for this year.
Right.
We did contact our, our families that expressed interest, and a lot of them know that we haven't, you know, it's not Phillipston, are they still interested in the MLS? The majority have come back and said, "Actually..."
So, Joe? Yes.
So this may come up. If you have a school choice student on an IEP, and the IEP addresses issues of transitions, social issues, that would mean that a move out of one building to another is not going to be conducive to the IEP strategy. How do we explain that to other families? I mean, I know we can say there are special needs and how many, how is that going to be determined? Because a family say, "Well, how come this one got to stay and this one did not?" And we can't, you know, I don't know how much of that would come up?
It's something of interest, it's actually been posed a few times, like, in the last, say, 24 hours. That's a team decision. They would have to, unless it's specifically said, you have to change school, I mean, literally, you have to, you have to, the IEP, it would be case by case, we have to decide that. That's not something that we would make, that's not a decision that we would make unilaterally.
But that would have to be understood, that those...
Oh, sure, I mean, absolutely. The IEP rules the day. You know, so whatever the team decides, just going back to that. Transition needs a lot of things, obviously. And, you know, there's ways to handle transition, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't want to speak, because I don't know, you know, individually, it's very different.
But just know that that's, that that would happen.
And just to clarify, you say team, and that team would include not us, obviously, you know, just for people listening, so they understand.
Yeah, so the parent, guardian, and of course, the educational team. So for that particular grade, the liaison, maybe the school psych, psychologist, special education teacher, et cetera, regular education teacher, whatever, whoever is, you know, represented on the IEP would be part of it.
Including the parents, which...
Yes, parents, parents account, yeah.
We do have in school that there's lots of kids transitioning to as well.
Right.
Right, but an IEP is written for someone who has a disability, an inability to do it as well as the average person.
So the point is, though, there's, there are students probably in EDS in Templeton Center, the current, or the old, in the hallway, that have transitional issues that are going to transition.
So we need someone to evaluate very carefully, because there's transition, and then there's other issues that...
I think transitioning, all of your...
That's your first one.
I just want that known, so that we don't end up hearing this as a committee.
I think it's a very good point, that, you know, people should, you know, there are circumstances that we will need to, we, the team would need to address and make sure that the, that need accommodations get them, period. That's, you know, that's part of it, so, yes.
How do you go about finding from these, from this, I mean, I'm just term it up. How do you go about asking these school choice applicants, the pending ones, if they'd be interested in Phillipston? I mean, how do you, it sounds like a lot of light work, I'm sure.
Not really.
But if you're bringing in more school choice kids, I mean, you can?
We do it all the time. We've done it the last couple of years. So if someone lost the school choice in the second, I'm making this up, like, is the second grade or third grade would like to school choice? We say that...
There's space.
All the elementary, it's not available. We have, we have availability in those, what do you mean?
I guess my point is, there would be a lot of unknowns for a period of time if we're trying to find additional teaching in all of the school choice, so I don't kind of feel about doing that. Is that feasible? And keeping school choice kids in Templeton that want to stay in Templeton, and keeping new ones, if you bring new ones into Phillipston? I mean, I just don't know how you do it, but is it feasible?
It would only, well, in that scenario, it will have to be addressed or discussed for the fifth grade, in my opinion. With 30, 31 kids per grade, as almost the overall average, you have, that would be something that we would have to look into. So if the committees, I know it's a point of discussion, but if the teacher was added because of the sheer numbers, which then lower the average class size down somewhere around 22, 21-ish, you know, depending the people on the list themselves who would like to school choice in the district, would simply be, simply, in that case, in the specific case of the fifth grade, they would simply be told that the only, the only opens up we have would be in Phillipston. And we would move back the folks who were, the kids that were actually in Phillipston. In that specific case.
I think Hank wanted to just say something else.
No, I was just getting back to what you originally stated about finding resources to maybe to replace some of these teachers, like that. Are we still talking about that, or is that...
Yeah, why don't we go, why don't we just have one more point on this? Because I... No, it's always easier. When we accept school choice students, they're supposed to assimilate into a district just like the towns' students do. So it's fine to tell somebody prior to accepting them that they can only go to a particular building. But once these students have been accepted three, four years ago, too, is it something that the state would agree that you can then pick them and tell them they have to be someplace else in our district? I mean, would, if they were complaint filed, would the state say, "Yes, the district has this authority"? They wouldn't?
They would not initially.
They would not?
It's, then even short of the regional agreement, which only speaks to resident students.
No, no, I'm not worried about that at this point. I'm talking about the state, because, you know, they wouldn't. But where do we have, I'd like to see something in writing that says that we can do that. Because all I knew was that they were not supposed to be identified either in the classroom. I'm not supposed to really know who's school choice.
In form.
Every form tells us.
I have, I, as the district superintendent, can move children to...
Yes, but we're identifying a group of students to work.
Right.
And I just want to make sure, because, you know, I've asked some questions earlier that if we had an earlier answer, it would have been helpful. That's why they don't want to get caught in this one. So if we could just make sure.
Well, I think, let's come back to that. Because I would like to get on with other discussions about what else we might do, and maybe some of this becomes less of an issue. So I think, Hank, you were going to offer some...
I mean, in normal times, I wouldn't suggest this, but we're going to have three, three buildings now in the district. Can we, can we work with just having three nurses, one in each building? Is that something we can look at, as something, you know, I don't know what their workload is, but, I mean, that's one way of getting maybe a couple of teachers back in the elementary.
So right now, we have, I believe, one nurse at Phillipston, two at Templeton Center, one middle school and one high school nurse.
I think that's, yeah, fine.
I'm talking four, because it's fine. I believe that we did have a retirement in the high school, so there is actually open position. Because obviously, anything you do impacts people as well.
Sure.
So I, I think we definitely, I see it's almost a no-brainer decision for us to look at one of those positions easily. I, I never really thought through two, but I'd be interested to hear because...
Is, and is that fifth one built into the budget, or is it, or are you out? That's the question.
It's still in there, because that was considered a place of...
I mean, the other alternative would be have one in each building and one float to where it's needed, the fourth one. I mean, you know, depending on how much floor, whatever.
But the high school and the middle school, wouldn't you, wouldn't it be more beneficial to have one at the high school and one at the middle school?
Well, it'd be beneficial to have two at Templeton Center, too. I'm just saying, these are extraordinary times for us, so I'm just trying to think of some, some way out of it, so. But if you did keep four, I mean, you could have the one floating to where it's needed, probably based up here, and then if she has to go to the TC or Phillipston, or if someone's out, she could cover. You wouldn't have to use the, I think we have a line in there for substitute nurses, is that correct? So maybe that's something that we could...
So we, to the point, this came up last week-ish, that when we, when we weren't sure, the configuration is different the first time around. There was quite a few students that were going to be at Templeton Center over September in the first operation.
Yeah.
So we knew at that point in time that we would have to do something very different there. Obviously, over the last, say, two weeks, three weeks, whatever the time frame is at this one, that position has been... that position has been, we waited to see what the actual configuration was going to end up. The position is open. The also, part of the discussion was that if you needed a fifth grade teacher, which.
I think we do.
One would argue that you do, that that, those funds would suddenly become that, that position. If you talk, you know, again, the National Nursing Board, or whatever they're called, I believe their ratio is, their suggested ratio is something along.
Seven fifty.
Six fifty or something.
Seven fifty to one.
In a healthy population.
In a healthy population.
Yeah, right. And the DPH, which we are, we're affiliated with, obviously, when we rolled the grant, but there's something around five hundred, five fifty-ish. So, and then it's for every additional, I forget, every additional on twenty-five, it's a point two, or they have a breakdown. So again, I certainly would recommend one nurse in one high school. That, that's just, from my perspective, is not, is not doable.
Okay.
The, the, the part is that you don't have a swing nurse, numbers to cover. But again, you would have a nurse in every building, that building or level. And I think that that's important. You would not have, I do not support or recommend one nurse in the whole middle high school. That doesn't, that would actually, that would actually exceed either of those, of those ratios.
How many, what is our population, again, projected for, for the different buildings?
Six twelve would be.
So PMS, T C, middle, middle school, high school.
If you, well, under the current plan, you would have, one second, I'll go back. You would have, bring the total load, seven, okay. In Phillipsden, under current, you'd have a hundred and forty-eight. Geographically, we talked about that before, you would have five sixty-five. Seventy-ish of those would be pre-K, which means they would not be there every minute of the day, but we will also discuss that. And the middle and high school would hover, I gotta change pages, we're talking. Middle high school is a, is combined seventy-two? Do I see that with my glasses, your eye glasses?
Yes.
It'd be seventy-two.
Can you, is it easy enough to split that out between the two?
Yes, so middle school is three seventy-eight and high school four oh four.
Four oh four.
What's T C?
Under current, it would be.
So four, four ninety-five.
Five sixty-five.
So four, is it four ninety-five, K through five, and then seventy pre-K kids?
As of right now, yes.
As of right now, okay.
Call it, there's thirty-nine each pre-K at this point, so I would say.
So I, I mean, I would like to see us redeploy that, that nursing position to fund a fifth grade teacher. I think it's the right thing to do for the kids. And then we would redeploy, obviously, our four nurses, however you manage to do that, because obviously, that's your, your thing. Does anyone want to, I'd just love to take a formal motion on that, because we're moving monies around in our budget. Would anybody, I would make the motion, so since I did, I would make the motion that we reduce the nursing staff by one and fund a fifth grade teacher at Templeton Center.
A move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment or discussion on that? Anyone want to express some last concerns?
You want one nurse to manage, well, that five sixty-five minus seven, seventy?
Okay, it's eighty, so it's about four eighty-five.
Four hundred and eighty students to manage, I mean, it's like keeping track of immunizations, keeping track of, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of work that goes into that, not to mention there's a crisis, because there could be a medical crisis and you have one nurse. Could you get a half, a half-time nurse for the elementary school?
We have the enhanced nursing grant, which is for part-time, for a nurse leader, which every district needs to have. But those, again, it's, it's part-time, so, I mean, their duties would be kind of stretched. In other words, I don't think they could cover, they, they could, they're a nurse, quite frankly, but.
But that's not part of the job.
It's not, no, it's not, direct service is not part of the job, so.
Would crisis intervention be part of it?
Oh, sure, I mean, they could.
So that, crisis might be covered by all of these other things.
We'd have to make sure that she's there when it happens, and I'm, again, I should.
How many of that population, how many of them are, have to have a med pass? How many of them are diabetics who have insulin pump, I mean, are there any getting?
So when we posed this question, the nurses, you know, accountability principles, like, you know, you know, one of their main concerns is that in this building, between the middle and high school, I believe, I believe there are four students on insulin pumps, for example. That, of course, is, you know, that's something that has to be monitored and watched very closely. That was certainly something that they, that they brought up as a, as a concern. In terms of the, the elementary level, I mean, we have quite a few, you know, non- insulin pumps, but there's a lot of medical issues that are, that are tracked and watched, et cetera. So, I mean, again, it's hard for me to, it would certainly not be anything non-typical from other schools, you know, the districts. When posed, or, yes, our nursing ratio would be about the same for most folks around us. A lot of the districts, though, that, that, when I say is our size or geographically, they have some type of support. Meaning, I'm gonna call it a spare nurse, because I don't know what to call it, a cover nurse or something. It's usually an L P N, you know, something to that skill. You know, because you, again, to the point, is that all that information has to be, there is a, back in the day, when folks just had all kinds of money, they would have a secretary. You, it was not unusual to see medical offices, nurses' office, have a secretary that would do a lot of data entry, because all this is about, yeah. Well, that, of course, went away, you know, that kind of stuff went away, and so they went with nurses and putting it, that kind of thing. So they, but it still has to be charted, is.
You have, there's a lot of documentation.
This is their license, right? So this is their state license that's, that's in play. So they will talk to you about the charting requirement, which of course is.
Then you have to make sure, because you have all these regulatory requirements, you have to meet, if you're missing any physicals.
Yeah.
That's a big number of managers, to make sure you're crossing all your Ts and dotting all your Is.
Where we're, yeah.
Could Phillipsden have a part-time nurse with only a hundred and forty-eight students?
So we, again, we talked about, a lot about this, and meaning back, and so what folks were concerned about the most when we talked about just medical services, is that geographically, there is an issue. Meaning that if there was an issue in this building, and whatever reason, there was one nurse, there's a nurse in this building. They're not, if not a nurse down in Phillipsden, then, well, whatever, how many miles between here and there? Well, yes, they have the control, you know, the info, which we, which we do when things happen. But obviously, the, the school nurse is absolutely our first and really our only recourse in a school. So that, that certainly can be, you know, reviewed, or reviewed. But that was, that was the concern, the common, we used to last.
So just building off of that point, could you put the part-time or as a half-time nurse leader, if they were stationed there, and then we did half-time in Phillipsden and half-time at T C for someone? And then the nurse leader was in Phillipsden to handle any crisis? At least you have a body in the building.
Which is not there every day.
If it's, yeah, I don't know what they.
It's checking, is that wholesome plan versus something? So there's, we don't know, what we're looking into is that, what we don't already is that we cannot take a current nurse, this is what we're thinking. Just take a nurse that we have right now, and if you made them the nurse leader, then half of their salary-ish would be that thirty-five, whatever it is for the grant. You can't do that, because you, it's part of the grant. And so, okay, so you have to literally go outside and say, okay, who would like to be a nurse leader? Now, what, if we wanted that nurse leader to be full-time, let's say if we wanted to, because it's a random position, it's not current, we could then, we could add whatever the, you know, the balance is. But again, you can't get a current sitting nurse in a building.
Got an idea? Why don't we look into getting like a nurse secretary, part-time, for the nurse in Templeton Center, to do data entry for the nurse? And then, I'm assuming the nurse that is retiring is, is in a higher bracket of salary, and it's not going to take up, a elementary, fifth grade elementary teacher is not going to take up that, the entire salary. So that part that isn't being used could pay for the secretary, that could be used in the elementary.
So just want to make sure I just say, so take the, we don't hire the high school nursing physician to create two positions, a full-time fifth grade teacher and then a part-time nurse admin, whatever you want, that can handle the data entry and chart work. I don't, is there, I don't know, do you, because I know you've got background, is there qualifications? Is it just data entry at that point? I don't, I.
I haven't seen a, I, I don't think so. We would check the DPH, just to make sure, I don't know, I haven't seen.
I mean, just collecting, collecting forms and transcribing them, I don't think you need any special qualification. Remember, the nurses still have to do all their documentation, so any med passes, anytime any kid walks through the door, even if they come in and just say, I'm sad, the nurse has to chart on that. So it's, documentation is a lot, and that's a lot of little kids coming in and saying, I miss my mommy, and you have to chart on that.
The state of Massachusetts says the ratio can be one to seven fifty, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
It says.
In a healthy. In a healthy, so that's what I ask.
But we're looking, we're comparing, you know, that, that applies to Holyoke and that applies to Lowell, and that's supposed to apply to a healthy population in those areas as well as Templeton, Phillipsden. So if that ratio can, can apply there, deemed as healthy, then one in five sixty-five minus the seventy of four ninety-five is, is certainly something that can be doable with some supports, maybe. But I mean, we really, the other point is, we're trying to get at a classroom of thirty-four, who knows who moves in if it's even more. So the teacher has those same type of responsibilities, both planning and documenting anything that happens in their room. So we're trying to free it up there, and I'm just saying, the state has that data. We know they don't support class sizes as high as we're looking at, so something's got to give, that's.
I was just asking.
And I, yet that is.
I don't know if we have help, I don't know what these kids have going on, that's why I asked.
Right, but, but all kids have it, you know, I mean, throughout the state, and that's what they're deeming as a ratio. So I'm just saying, if you look at data, that has to be considered.
I guess my question is, for instance, if I have a, say I have four students in the entire building, and especially the young ones with insulin pumps, they need a lot of help with insulin pumps, they're coming in for a bolus, it's not that simple. And I've watched nurses and trying to figure, what did you eat? What was your blood sugar? Have to scroll through their pump, have to give a bol, and the kids are not telling the whole truth, and blah, blah, blah. That takes time. And then, let's say you have some special needs kids, some, there are students who need straight catheters three times a day. That takes time. You can't give anyone attention when you're doing that, because it's, it's a private thing and it takes time. That's, oh, my final question is, do we have students with those needs or not? Because it will make a difference of how much availability.
So you're looking for some data on our population?
Yeah, just, you know.
I understand, my husband's a nurse, I, yet that, that it's, that it's a heavy job.
It's just a concern, that's all. Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Do we have any data on, on our, the health conditions, or?
Well, I, I simply asked what were our, what were our most pressing, I call them issues, but what were our most, our highest needs? And diabetes was absolutely number one, no health, but it's the kid, it's honestly the students with the insulin pumps, because they, as they say, they don't, they don't ever keep, they're not eating well, they don't eat breakfast, they're not watching their sugar levels, you know, it's, it's those type of things. So again, when they crash, it's, you know, it's definitely more concerning. I'm, that's simply the question that I asked as well. They did not, they did not state that there was anything more than that, although that's good enough, so to speak, you know what I mean? But, I mean, no, from my perspective, so as, as I was asked, I did not hear of anything about, you know, needing to be, any, any other type of medical interventions, other than.
And that may not be the case.
And it may not be the case, right? I don't, yes. They would, they would absolutely have told me, could they move it tomorrow? Sure, I mean, you know how that goes, but I mean, I don't, that wasn't the latest, it was mostly the, you know.
Vicki, did you have something? Any other questions or comments? I, I, I know, Laura, you had thrown out another idea. Did you want to amend the motion?
Well, at this point, I don't know if it's needed, so I won't amend.
All right, so I think let's, let's vote on, on the motion on the floor, which was to use the, it happens to be the high school nursing position, but that nurse position to fund a fifth grade teacher at the Templeton Center Elementary, sorry. And we will come out of this into our official school committee meeting and reaffirm everything we're doing here, so.
Can I just clarify what numbers we're looking at when we're talking class sizes? Because we have two sheets in front of us, and they're one of the, you know, what it would look like if we didn't have all the school choice kids move in Phillipsden. We're looking at the Plan H, correct?
Plan H, right.
But the average class size is thirty.
If, once we figure out what else we might be able to do, then we can go back and have a discussion on these school choice kids, but I think we really got to come to some terms with what, you know, resources we may be able to reallocate to see them, what else we can do.
Just a question on the motion. We don't know what will happen with registration. So we don't know if the fifth grade is going to be to the need that it is. There may be another grade, so we'll come back in August and adjust that by grade that shows the, the number if need be.
Oh, absolutely.
So that we say fifth grade now, understand that in eight quarters.
Another one goes even higher with the grade, and I'm sure that that will be mutually necessary.
Grade, grade four is only six years behind.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we have a lot of holes we got plugged, this is, this is one, one teacher, and I think we have a look at what else we can do. So hearing, any other comments? Hearing no other, all in favor of redeploying that, the monies from that nursing position to the elementary school at Templeton Center? I would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so that would be unanimous, we'd like to have those monies moved. And I'm going to keep a list of these motions that we need to retake.
I wrote it down.
Good, too.
Teacher.
Yeah. We just want to make sure when we come out into our regular meeting, we do the same thing. Okay, so that gives us one, one teacher. We still have four other positions potentially that we could look to do something with.
I have a question again, I'm catching up, sorry. This assistant principal at Baldenville was moved into school choice.
Yeah.
Back into the school choice.
Back in, and I wondered what the reason for that was.
When we came up with our Plan H, that was part of the, the Plan H to provide enough relief to, to go down to the number that we came to. That was part of the Plan H.
So we had to put that back into school?
That, and we also put back the sixth grade teacher in the school choice.
Can I just clarify to you on the assistant principal? We had a lot of discussion about the assistant principal position, then it really came down to a matter of safety. So I don't really think, we haven't looked at, you know, filling that position, but it really, about safety and.
Keeping, not really, keeping it.
Well.
Yeah, we, there's the middle school.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about, I'm talking about that. Sorry, I'm talking about the middle school, yeah. The middle school assistant principal, we're currently in vacant, so. The middle school assistant principal was currently in vacant, so the fear of safety issues.
Right, for the middle school.
I just wondered why it was to school choice.
Yeah, that was part of the poll, coming up with the number to come down enough that. Any other, I have many thoughts, but I want to push out, Hank, you're shaking your head and laughing at me.
No, not me.
Again, when we discuss this, again, about how would the configuration? So, we currently, it's five hundred kids regardless, we could take. That, that was, those positions at that point, we had one summer, oh, no, no, we had one school, school year department in one full, full year. In that, in that configuration, meaning in that, in that current. We, we talked a lot about that because the fact that there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of action, there's going to be someone watching the buildings, someone manning their gate, so to speak, but that was something that we felt important to have. Now, if we're talking about charting and helping charting and nursing, where, you know, that's probably something that, so in, putting perspective for those folks that have kids in high school, we have a guidance secretary. So, that would be the role that this secretary, the other secretary would have, of course, because you're still getting, it's still, you know, we're not putting it in the colleges.
I get it, but we can talk about it because.
No, that's good.
So, as you said.
I'm just putting over the conversation from before.
So, this could help depth's concern about having additional resources implemented, so, okay, so that.
We have to change the context for the new composition.
I don't think so, but I, I would.
I see, we also have a floating secretary between middle and high school.
Right.
Is that a necessity?
That is the, again, when we had the current configuration, the discussion, actions, the last configuration discussion, it was, it was needed for the, to take the attendance and all this stuff that goes into the state, that's part of the, the, the part of that. That piece of it is the attendance piece, which we've, we've had some issues with, and we talked about, but that was a position that we decided to keep based on the conversations, given what I just said, the reasons why, the last, yeah, the last time we learned about this.
And middle and high school now has what, one hundred and twenty-five less students from the fifth grade, so?
Middle school?
Middle school, high school. Well, yeah. About a hundred, yeah?
Whatever, whatever the senior, whatever the senior class was, so the senior classes were around eighty. The only, the only group that's left, the middle, middle high school, is really the seniors. If you think of it in that, in that context, because no one's coming in, because fifth grade is at the elementary level. So, the last year's fifth grade is now six, they just, they just stay here, nobody, nobody joins the fifth grade. So, we only, we only dropped about eight here, we don't need to do the math, but obviously, it's whatever the senior class was.
That senior classes, who's dropping the numbers? So, I'm still, my point is still that we do have eighty-five to a hundred less students in this building than when that discussion took place.
So, what are the risks if we didn't have that position then?
The risks would be, well, we have to have, obviously, the secretaries that are there with the attendance, which, I mean, I don't, we never talked, I'd want to get a better handle on that.
It's a full-time job today to involve that, so I'm concerned that, I just threw it out there, because if we're going to look at secretaries at TC, where there's two, we have three for the two schools now, you know, so what's the justification of needing that position? And we had it floating, as Triplo mentioned, that we do have one less grade there that they're trying to administer. Have a full-time nurse in each, so, you know, we say charting, well, those nurses, although they have physicals for sports, they have a whole bunch of other things that come in. So, what would be our, our risk of, if we, if we said, okay, so we don't need a full-time, an extra full-time, that split half between the middle and high school, that secretary position? What is the risk to the district by doing that?
Not to? Honestly, I, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to honestly talk to the building principals about that. That's not a discussion that we've had in such a long while, so I, I would, just to be fair, I would have to talk to the building principals. I wouldn't want to minimize it, and I certainly wouldn't want to overtalk, I wouldn't want to overspeak it.
That position is only a school year, too, it's not full year.
So, can we put that on the agenda for, well, that would be August then, right?
Yeah, well.
We need some feedback on that.
I, I want to just kind of switch gears for a second and talk about kindergarten and school choice. We have, according to the list, I think thirty-two kindergarten students on our waitlist. It seems, I hate to say obvious, because that's not really the word I'm going for, and I don't know what word I'm going for, but I think my inclination would be to believe that we should think about opening up another kindergarten class and funding that kindergarten teacher with the school choice dollars that those kids, because that totally justifies that non-position. And I'm, I'm going there next because there could be additional funds maybe, I mean, again, we, we keep saying we don't want to use our school choice monies for ongoing expenses, and we know that, but when we look at the risks to the district with doing some of these moves, I think we have to talk through at least, if we did it, what would it look like, and then what would it mean? You know, because one could say, so let's just pay for those five teachers at a school choice and put it to the wind, and next year we probably can't do it again, but this year we make it, I, I, you know.
So, yeah, so if, if you were trying to hedge the loss, potential loss of school choice students, what now we're going to fill it? You would do so quite frankly with utilizing, remember, we have four empty rooms in the new elementary class. One of them technically, not technically, it is a pre-K, kindergarten, and so you could very well create a class, okay, utilizing the, utilizing the list of school choice students. It is not uncommon, quite frankly, it gets a little dicey after the third grade, but most kindergarten teachers are early childhood certified, so that's K one, two, you know, you know, so that, so in other words, they would follow, and I say follow, they would not necessarily keep the same kids, but they would follow the buffer, as it, as it were. If, if, again, we're looking at kindergarten numbers as they are right now, right now, they're around, there are thirteen Phillipston kindergartners that have signed up, and we have an average of seventeen in Templeton. Those are good, those are good, you will see that there are no school choices in any of those, in those categories. So, to, you, we, when we contacted the parents that were on the list, we simply said, look, we may not know what direction is this, we're going in in terms of school choice or kindergarten until, I forgot when we gave them the drop-off, but it was, it was like middle. We, we gave it, would you like still to be considered, and to be kept on the list? I, I don't know, almost all of them have said, yes, please give us some of those, we're very interested in them. So, if it's, if, you know, if we are hedging the, the path, to make sure that we, again, I'm going to bring up old numbers, but, you know, eight, what, eight hundred thousand dollars of insurance, health insurance monies are paid out of school choice for our employees. So, we have to keep that differential net strong to, to take that. If you're going to sustain a loss, a potential loss, if you think you are, then that is obviously a great way to do that. Do we have the room? Yes. And one of the teachers, one of the, you know, I'd say five, six teachers that were, that were laid off, one of them, of course, at every level, but one of them was a, was a kid, was a licensed kindergarten teacher with early intervention, so they would be called back just be, obviously because of that. So, in other words, it, it bears thinking, I don't think we can wait too long to make that decision, because people would go, I don't know, but that's that.
Hank?
So, the, the teacher, the position falls the next year up to the first grade?
Unless we get another, however many kids falling for school choice the following year, and then we would need to, you know, but yes.
That's what I was going to say, I mean, if the same thing happened the year, the next year, you'd do it again and again.
You probably, you know, you probably, if the budget mirrors anything that this budget looks like, you probably wouldn't, even if you got forty kindergarten kids, you wouldn't take us, you wouldn't take any of them, you would just take that teacher and follow all the way up, and not take any more school choice, because I'm just saying, you'd have to make that decision then. You couldn't just keep adding teachers and keep putting them into school choice.
Right, if, if you got the same amount of numbers, you know, if you had another thirty the next year, that's something we'd have to think about.
Yeah, I think we'd have, we'll have to address this year, the current, the current year. So, I, I guess what I'm thinking is, is if we, if we went ahead, and, and I don't know, Susan, if any of the people who vindicated Phillipston as their first choice, if one of them was kindergarten or not.
No, the one that I just saw quickly, that I didn't really find out.
You know, and, and obviously, just because if we're trying to, said, we've got to be equitable with all of our decisions, you know, if we opened up, what is our optimum kindergarten class size? Well, I know my.
So, there's no need to.
Sixteen, eighteen, ten, eighteen, max.
It might be ten, we have, we have averaged, you know, the lowest ones, and that's been manageable. The kindergarten does, they do have pairs assigned to each of those classrooms, so that's, that is one of them.
So, if, if we were looking to open up a kindergarten classroom, we currently have on average, what is it, seventeen?
Yes.
In, in Templeton, we have thirteen in Phillipston. So, if we took, because the other risk that we have is, we know our residents like to forget to register their kids. We have people moving in, so we, we, we need to leave spots. If we took, if we made a decision to say accept twenty kindergarten, school choice children, and opened these classrooms, and utilize those funds to hire a teacher, that would be financially doable, and.
And this classroom would be where?
In Templeton Center.
I just asked, so we're, we're doing this, we're adding a teacher, and you just said that there's power here as well, do we have to do a teaching in the power?
Well, and, well, that's, that's a very good point, and then what are the dollars associated with adding a teacher, and say a para, to support a kindergarten class versus the dollars that if we just use that rough, that grand, that's a hundred thousand dollars. We, we're adding a teacher, we're adding Bennys, we're adding para.
Elementary teacher, forty-five thousand.
Oh, about fifteen thousand.
Another, how much, I'm sorry, was told?
Oh, a grand total.
Forty-five, sixteen.
So, sixteen, does that include the Bennys?
No.
So, the seventy-five.
We were not paying.
It's probably covers, okay, so, so, you know, roughly, I'm going to say seventy, only because if you throw health insurance, I, I don't, we can't ever assume that, if they didn't have, I'm going to show it this year, you know, that's all that stuff. So, where I'm going with this is, and again, this is going to be the tolerance of the committee, with input obviously from Dr. Kazivan and Ms. Geister, is that would leave thirty thousand dollars of new monies in school choice that we could potentially think about, I, I don't know. And again, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just putting the facts out there, that people are looking to find monies to create funding for additional positions, that we can bring some of the teachers back to get these class sizes back in line. How would we, you know, is that an option that we would need longer yet? I'm just going to lay it right there.
What is the minimum, the minimum that could be in that classroom? Minimum students, so.
So, that would be, I would think seventy divided by five, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what, ten, twelve, no, fourteen, so if we get fourteen.
And if we don't?
Which we have thirty-two on the waitlist, so I think, you know, I would even be saying, maybe we look at two classrooms.
Well, we don't have, yeah.
That's pushing it, but like you could.
There is room in Phillipston, too, to bring in.
Well, that's, so there are, there are two things, there's certainly room in Phillipston.
Thirteen in Phillipston.
There's thirteen in Phillipston. Plus, depending, again, on who is registered and who is not, that there's going to actually be room in the existing classrooms in Templeton. So, I realize there's seventeen, but if you go up to eighteen, nineteen, or whatever, it's a very doable, you know, amount, then that's even more. So, do you know what I'm saying? So, you'd have to, there would be a, the D finesse map, as they say, but you, you have the room to take more than the, than the classroom.
So, this is our, so, so just, just to say it out loud to everyone to hear, when Desi put forth her new guidelines on school choice, the first lottery is supposed to happen on July fifteenth. The second lottery happens, was it a week or two before school started, don't forget what the, the exact date is, but that would be towards the end of August. So, my thinking is, is it's July second, we really need to decide what we're doing, because we need to have a lottery, we've got to get that going and done, so July fifteenth can happen, and we can get that settled. I think that leaves us time after that to look at what, what residents might come into the district, what changes there would be, and could we potentially take more, that we could decide, probably around this fourteenth meeting, and, and make any further decisions. That would be the way I'm looking at it, but, with that different comment?
I have two houses for sale on the other side, one of them, I think, young kids moving in.
So, other than that fourteen we need to make in spite, we said it's, it just was announced, Templeton, but then we had questions over here, is why not Phillipston, the new kindergarten? Because there is space, and why not is the question?
She's asked, so if we took one of those classrooms, we had a kindergarten classroom, is that going to help us with the MSBA issue with the?
Sort of fills the classroom.
Fill up our classrooms to help us with these.
Well, that doesn't affect the MSBA, so, because we're using it as the room there, it was meant to be, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the actual.
That's not a problem, so.
But that's why we're going to use that one.
Right, so, so but to Jeff's point, is why in Templeton rather than Phillipston?
No, we would, we would do what has to happen, because you have X amount of spots, yes, you'd have to do it at the same time. You would have to do it at the same time, so what you would do is, I'm going to make up numbers, I do not know, let's say that there are twenty-five openings, you would literally go, okay, according to the guidance, you go, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, you know, ten, are, they're going to go here, that's, that's where they're, that's here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or whatever. You would actually literally pick per, so you're, if you get picked, depending on where you are, that's, that's your spot, that's your spot. And so, you literally do the, you would linearize that.
So.
So, just so clear, that's we're picking the spot, then it would just, if you, we pick the spot. The students, that's where they go to, right? Yes.
All right, so, say we had twenty openings, and we, the first twenty we picked would be for, the first twenty we filled would be for Templeton, and then if there's others that wanted to go with Phillipston, that would be in the second.
So, if there were six, if there were six, and I'm literally making this up, but if there were six openings, Phillipston, then you would, then you would have the remaining X on the list, you would get six.
And offer it to them.
Then they want Phillipston, then they go to Phillipston, then you go to the next school.
Then you go to the next school, but then you pick.
Right, right, okay.
Wait a second. I was, I was a little distracted because there was talking in the audience, but did you just say that with the new? I was, I was a little distracted because there was talking in the audience, but did you just say that with the new, the new kindergarten classroom, you would take the new students and put them in the new one?
There's no school choice in kindergarten right now. Here, we're not moving anybody elsewhere.
So what were you just talking about?
Brand new school choice, because there's no existing school choice.
We would create.
We would create one new and it would.
In kindergarten? That's what I'm saying. But would you take those new students and put them in that?
Yes.
No, you would take the, wouldn't you take students?
There are none, there are none.
There are nothing, okay.
There's none going to Phillipston.
There's no new school choice in kindergarten.
Okay, all right.
But we haven't, we haven't addressed that yet, so this allows us to address all the requests for school choice into kindergarten.
All right.
That end up?
Yes.
So I, I.
Huh?
Too much candy?
I, I think that moves from a financial stability is a point when we talk about school choice and ensuring that we have students and I hate to say pipeline, because that is just not what it is, but I think we need to seriously consider doing that and I, if someone would like to make a motion as such, I would certainly entertain it.
Can make a motion that we open up another kindergarten for school choice?
I guess, and probably have a number of that, a number of students, because we're, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to come out and make a formal motion for school choice, which would include, because on July fifteenth, we'll bring this lottery, we have to have that information.
So what's, what's, what's a number, what's the maximum number we're looking at for a classroom size for kindergarten?
You, you, well, you keep it with the average. So what you would do is you would say, the average is seven, the high end, right, you'd go seventeen. And so you'd start with that, that'd be your first, that'd be your first go.
But I would be more after twenty, because we can bring some into Phillipston as well.
Well, then you do a lottery up to seventeen.
For Phillipston, for Templeton and three additional in Phillipston, or.
But what, well, I know what's, what is semi-optimal size for a classroom, for a kindergarten, twenty?
Twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
For kindergarten?
Well, it is, but that's, we've been averaging that anyway. We've been averaging that for the last couple, last couple of years. I'm not saying it's optimal, no, I'm not saying it's optimal, but if we're working off of the, what the average, working average has been, it's been around.
Grammy, where my grandson goes, twelve or fifteen max. That's it, that's it.
When you do an application or you do a lottery, can you put on there, you know, the student's name and then Templeton, Phillipston or both, like for the instructions? So if you pull seventeen and they only want Templeton, or if there's somebody that only want Phillipston, then you?
You put the Phillipston, so what you do, if you have a preference, you put it down and they go into the same jar, so to speak. So you're still picking. In other words, I would put the Phillipston folks in the Phillipston jar, the Templeton folks in the Templeton jar, and then I would pick for those, but then ultimately, you know, you didn't have to expand that, you know, if everybody was Phillipston. Well, if you got, still got, if you still have spots, you still gotta start, you still gotta pick and get that number up and go, there was no room in Phillipston, but I bet you've been selected, do you want, do you want to go there? I mean, you'd have to start doing those type of things. If you, if you so inclined, we don't have to take, we do not need to, to take their suggestion. So in other words, the committee does not need to, just because they want to go someplace, it's, you know, it's where we can put them or where we can fit them.
I have one that says TC only and the one that says TC or Phillipston, they're fine.
Well, that makes sense. I mean, I think comments would then.
I mean, I could go that way at the beginning.
We don't, we don't put a school of choice, Susan, we don't. Sometimes we'll put the comments, or they'll tell us.
And here's the thing is, it's a blind draw. So, I mean, honestly, it's, if we're going to motion about opening a classroom, we need to say that we'll have eighteen or seventeen slots.
What I'm saying, let's say if it was twenty, if there's other people coming in town during the summer, the other four classes can absorb those people and we'd be maxed out in that particular classroom already, so.
That's right.
I would not touch that. I would just do it for this classroom. Absolutely. I would leave, I would just do it for this classroom and leave and then stop until August.
But I can't say if people will live in town, then you're.
That's it, that's exactly, you're only doing this lottery for this one teaching position.
Right.
This one position, not, not the other three.
No, no.
Is the lottery then going to also be done for Phillipston to add seven more people?
Or.
Or whatever it is, get to seventeen and more.
Well, that's our decision, that if.
It's really your decision. It's really, there is.
So again, I would entertain a motion from someone if they wanted to make it about utilizing the school choice for the classrooms in kindergarten.
Except. Twenty school choice for Templeton and seven school choice for Phillipston if the numbers are later.
Never again.
Never again.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second that we accept twenty school choice kindergarten in the Templeton Center and seven school choice positions for kindergarten and Phillipston. I have a second on that. Any additional comments or questions?
There's seven for Phillipston?
Yeah, because they already have thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Any, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, understand. So unanimous that we will go ahead and add kindergarten classroom. And I just want to reiterate that the first lottery is July fifteenth and then when we come back in August, I'm hoping before then, obviously, we got the discussion, but assuming August was our next meeting, we can open this up and readdress.
I think we're probably gonna leave another meeting as you are.
Which I, I believe so, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, probably at the end of the next meeting. So, but we will have time to readdress it and make any tweaks or changes to that too, but at least this gets us a start. All right, so.
Yeah, Jared, I just want to bring, so we've been talking about how we're moving, but one thing that I would say, I'll call it a windfall. We were notified by the Department of Ed over and over and over that we were not going to receive the early childhood grant. We get told that every year. They finally sent us a letter saying, no, this is, we're serious this time. We're not going to give you the early childhood grant, it's roughly thirty thousand dollars, and so we budgeted accordingly. So we, we budgeted what that amount is, because that's how pre-K came, you know, while we got rid of that. And then lo and behold, we received the grant, although it was told that we were not going to.
We're definitely not gonna get it.
Yeah, so apparently, you're definitely not gonna get it is, is. I simply add that because that does sit on our, if this was a balance sheet, it would sit on the, you know, on the black side, so to speak. And I do, again, I just want to make sure that we did confirm that, that we were supposed to receive the money, because it wouldn't be the first time that we've received money, we're not supposed to, quite frankly. So, so, but we did confirm it and so I wanted to make sure that, that the committee knew that, because again, we confirmed that.
So we have thirty-five thousand dollars in a line item.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars in a line item that we previously were not going to have, but we just found out because we now have the grant to apply, that we could utilize to fund, partially fund another position.
Was that grant for something specific?
It would be necessary.
Early childhood.
So we could do the kindergarten teacher.
Was it supposed to be? Was it written for something specific though?
And that.
Early childhood.
Yeah.
It will have it.
It's nothing, nothing specific though?
Yeah.
So, or offset any losses we have in school choice to bank it for that, so.
Wait a minute.
I say, when you're taking this, walking to a nurse to a fifth grade teacher, you've got twenty thousand dollars and then with the thirty thousand from the grant being freed up in the budget, that's fifty thousand, so we now have a total of fifty thousand teaching funds, either pay teacher or looking at another grade.
So we could do two positions between that nurse position and the thirty thousand is what we're.
Yes.
So.
Be first grade and away.
Well, let's, I think that the next discussion though is can, what other monies might be out there that, you know, I know we get notifications about things all the time and updates, I don't know, I mean, at this point, it's late in the game, so I know we've locked in on health insurance and retirement, all that stuff, so I know there's really not a lot of wiggle room in those types of expenses that may fluctuate upfront. Does anyone on the committee have any thoughts or questions that they want to ask about potential positions or if Dr. Kazivan or the best, if you have any other ideas of what, I mean, everything causes pain. I think it's the, the level of pain or tolerance, you know, where do we make the most difference in for these kids? And how, you know, if we do have to shift something, you know, where is it, where do we shift from that has a lesser impact? Because that just gets us, you know, one, two, we still have three teaching positions that we've had to take down. And I, and I, and I know this because we've looked at this a thousand times, so it's like.
So, I think before we decide, we might expend that fifty thousand, we might want to wait and see what happens with our school choice students if we lose any, and that would back Phil for next year. If we don't lose any school choice, then even come September, we could hire another, or bring back another teacher in the elementary.
My only concern with that is whether we dump our school choice kids between now and then, you know what I mean?
Yeah, does this give us an opportunity to retain by adding that teacher, because now we don't have to displace those students?
Right, if we're making them wait to figure what school they're gonna go to, then they already mean.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I would say that the fifth or.
Oh, the fifth is.
The fifth is pretty.
Definitely.
Can I ask a question about the fifth grade? I mean, we have ten students who want to come to fifth grade.
Yep.
That's fifty thousand dollars, which is about a teacher. If we accepted those ten fifth grade students, like granted them in at all, um, there's a risk and, is, I mean, that's just, and again, I'm not for or against any of these things, just throwing options out there. That would be another potential option to fund another fifth grade teacher, take those ten students in, put that teacher in Templeton Center, even out those classrooms if you didn't even.
We have one.
Let's just forget, let's, that'd go somewhere else, you know, I mean, so this is, so you now would have fifth grade, it's a hundred and twelve with four teachers, if we didn't move any school choice kids over, okay? Or we only had to move some, or maybe, yeah, I don't, is it something we would want to think about? Again, it's just an option that we have.
I mean, the same is said for first grade. Same has been said for first grade.
First grade, get these ten in first grade.
So I guess my question is, would this make more sense, and I know this is adding a lot of work to somebody's plate, but to contact these people that are pending, to see if they're still interested, to see if they're still pending and come back?
Have we done that already though?
We do, it's kindergarten, these years do now, because it's all automated, so. So, so we can come back to know, come back in a couple of weeks and know.
Well, we need to come back before July fifteenth, this is the thing, is we have to have this message.
Come back July fifth, I don't care.
No, we'll come back July fifth.
But come back next week. Yeah, I don't think we'll be answered, or the week after, so that we can have a clearer picture of these people's selections, is that?
We know this though.
We know that they're still interested.
Because we just sent them. Oh, sorry, I'm missing the.
I'm talking to the.
I got you, all right, I'm sorry.
Whenever it's available, try to order it, and I know they keep on competition summary. Does that make sense?
Say again, Vicki.
Just to have a clearer picture of these pending school choice applicants and if they're still interested, because this is a significant amount that are pending, but I also understand that they're from, you know, starting in January, putting in applications, and they have already chosen a school.
Sure.
And if they're willing to come, that brings in income, that is another.
And maybe we can fund.
So how many do we have K five that want, or one five that want to come in?
Seventeen, twenty-two, twenty, thirty-eight school choice pending applications from one to five, let's forget kindergarten, because there's thirty-two of those, so twenty.
So, how much would we?
That's five thousand in person.
You've just, you've just taken school choice existing, taken them out of the buildings that they're placed, you're going to put them in another building and we're going to accept students.
No, I would keep the kids that are already in here.
We're gonna divert, we're gonna stay if we get these.
Oh, oh, that's.
That's the whole point of doing this, is we can take the school choice place. Yeah, I mean, that, that's the consideration, yes.
That's what we can write, so.
And if that means that we've got to put everybody into Phillipston or we have to even, differently, but no, absolutely.
But they do school choice pending applicants, the existing school choice.
Let me give you an example. Of the current school choice children who are in this district, who are school choice students in Templeton, the BEs who will go to Templeton, so what you would do is they would then go back, they were never going anywhere, but on paper, they would, they would stay where they're at, and out of the eleven, you would then backfill the.
I think that has to be in any motion, because I didn't listen to that.
I'm just saying this.
We're talking about.
Can I just ask, so I just want to roll this, we just had a discussion about the nurses, the nurse having four hundred eight students, are any of these additional students?
Yeah.
Is that an issue with the nurse stadium, that we can enroll?
Yeah, and we're gonna end up with nurses at TC, yeah.
I was just about to say that what you've done, depending on what happens, right, so you put twenty, I'm just gonna use twenty, sorry, twenty in the kindergarten, yeah, twenty more, or, no, yeah, thirty, forty kids. So now you've, now you're up over, now you're at six, seven hundred kids. I had to literally re-add everything, but if you're, you're starting, I'm gonna need services again, so. You know, that's, that's the, that's the juxtaposition. School choice is a formula, it's a formula. We try to keep it around at the elementary, this, it's all shot now, so don't, I mean, this form, it was the other way. We would try to keep it around ten to twelve percent. Why? Because ten to twelve percent is roughly one class. When you get too dominant, you get too large at the elementary levels, again, you then have one, you know, you can see this scenario where it becomes too large, something will begin, you can't tell the school choice children to leave, of course, or residents to leave. So, but not only that, as you're building things on auxiliary, we need auxiliary resources around that, and so we have to, we have to worry about not just the teacher-centric conversation, this all adds on to the other parts. And so that itself is, yeah, ten kids can pay for a teacher, right? Every child is dependent on more than one teacher, you know, you know, so that's, so, but that's why kindergarten makes sense in certain, certain levels, because they are at the very beginning and we will have them and you can, you can, one teacher can move, you're not going to pass them on. That's why I was using that analogy before, but they will just follow. You know, you want a teacher literally to cover the first and the second grade two years after that and figure things out. Beyond that, if you add, again, you're not doing the fifth grade anyway, you get two more kids, you're at thirty-two, thirty, I mean, three classes of thirty-one, thirty-two, I think that's a necessity. You take enough just to lower that class size and just kind of stay good and then back, take the kids back to TC, quote-unquote, and use the school choice kids that are on the list to fill that for Phillipston. And they just kind of go, okay.
That makes sense.
Because you're, yeah, because remember, we did not hire, so I will say this, Jared, so where are the cuts for us? The cuts, one of the most important cuts that would never even happen, which is the intense special needs teacher, which we did not, because we, that is a cut, we need that. So we're going to make it okay, we're going to make it happen with existing staff, taking on more kids sometimes can mean that you're going to need those type of services.
Right.
So that teacher that doesn't, never worked here, it was just on paper, is in fact a cut that we know that we're going to need and hopefully not immediately. So I don't want to, I don't want to double my, I don't want to double my chances of needing those type of services when I don't have the resources.
That makes sense, yeah. Good point of view.
You know, we added all the social emotional component, you add more students than.
More support, have to.
So I think there are two, there are two areas that you can benefit from. One, kindergarten, for, I think we just talked about, fifth grade. One, kindergarten, for, I think we just talked about, fifth grade is a necessity. If things happen down the road, or I don't know what's, you know, we'll, we've, I guess there are options, we'll call them that. But I, I say you stay packed, because you become too, too big.
So, what I'm hearing, and, God, Dan, can you first?
I did, so if we did, it looks like we're going to do the fifth grade, so we would...
The fifth grade, plus we have the thirty thousand, so together we could do, to, I'm just saying, we have...
We're not going to move kids to Phillipston from fifth grade, then, we're going to leave them.
Well, then, we're going to...
You would hire our school choice, you would take our kids, the kids would stay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
You would then access the eleven on the school choice list to fill the positions. Remember, they're currently in Phillipston, that's what they would go.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, what I'm hearing then, only in the interest of time as well, but we can make this as long as we need to, but, but, but I think we've kind of come to some sort of consensus here is that, one, we are looking to open up school choice for kindergarten. We would accept twenty at Templeton Center and seven at Phillipston. In fact, we could, we could, we could do a fifteenth lottery pull, and we're good with that. The second piece is, and I know we only motioned with the high school nurse, we didn't discuss that thirty thousand dollar grant. For the high school nurse, we did motion that we utilize the monies from that for a fifth grade teacher. But when we added this thirty thousand in, we can, we feel we could utilize that plus the rest of the nursing money to hire a second elementary teacher, spot TBD, because it'll be based on, you'll have, I mean, really, you need to tell us where that went. We know fifth grade because of just the numbers, but, you know, we will figure that out. The other piece then is that we really need to find out about the school choice numbers. So we could get in touch with the rest of the population, we have kindergarten, but the one through five, and find out if they're still committed as far as choice. Obviously, there's no guarantee, because anyone can make a decision on the first day of school, the second, any day of school, and leave. So we don't know until there's an actual child in a seat. But if we could maybe get some confirmation from the other applicants that, one, they're still interested, and could we also ask if there would be a preference for school? Because I think that would be important to know as well, and this way at least we have an idea.
It's a non-binding preference.
A non-binding, yeah, like if, if, you know, what would be, maybe even rank your order of prefer... I, I don't know, that you can figure out, because again, if someone obviously wants to choose to Phillipston, that's really an easy thing, because we do have spots there, and it makes sense. So with, with that being said, we never did, we never did another motion just to utilize that thirty thousand dollars in grant money, plus the additional money from the nurse, to fund another elementary position, TBD at this point, would be something we...
I'm, I'm a little concerned about allocating the thirty thousand, because I don't know how many families might leave over this business switching building. And so that puts the school choice, every student that leaves, five thousand dollars out. So if we could just hold on to the thirty...
No. The only thing I would say about it is it allows us to keep school choice kids where they are, and gives those people certainty that they don't have to move to the left. So that's, that's kind of like the balance. I, I know what you're saying, we need money in our pocket, but on the flip side, if the people, if our parents and families don't know that we're considering doing this, they are going to just leave. So that, that's the risk. I, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm not advocating on where we are, I'm just putting the facts out there. I definitely think so, but I, so do we want to hold off on that piece? We'll just deal with the fifth grade teacher at the moment, and we'll, we'll have to reschedule him, maybe next week.
I'd like to hold off on that thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Um, we're still, excuse me, we're still in the meeting here. If everybody could please be quiet, we are in the middle of a meeting. Thank you. Okay, so we will go with our original motion, and we'll have only a few other potential changes. So with that being said, when we, after we close this and we reopen our regular school meeting, we will go ahead and redo those two motions, and, and we'll just set up another date at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Is everybody clear that, is there anything else that anyone wanted to bring up? Or any other information that they wanted to ask Dr. Kazman or Miss Best to look into us, into, for us, prior to what apparently moves will be coming back next week to discuss? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes, we did, we voted on two things. All in favor?
Aye.
We were going to take a, maybe a five-minute recess, so that we can go to our next meeting, so. Like we called the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School Committee to order, let's start with the French pledge of allegiance.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just announce that the meeting is being recorded by NRST in conjunction with Templeton Community TV, TCTV, and we provide that feed to both Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV, plus it comes up on various social media outlets. Next on the agenda, I didn't know if there would be any bills or payrolls, there are no, no, no new ones as of this week. We will do public input first, we have a total of twelve minutes available for public input, a maximum of three minutes per person. I do want to just let the crowd know, there's a lot of you here. It's very difficult for us to conduct our business meeting, which has to be done in public. It's our business meeting in public, with a lot of chatter in the audience. If you feel the need, that you need to talk, please step outside and allow us to conduct our business meeting. With that being said, our public input is only on items on the agenda. And if I have anyone who'd like to speak, I need you to come down front. I need you to identify who you are, where you live, and you can certainly address the committee. So is there anyone who likes... There seem none, I'm going to move on. Alright.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, we actually have a microphone, which I just noticed myself. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kevin Thomasetti, reside in Gardner. I have two children in the Narragansett School District. I'm just reviewing the frequently asked questions that have been publicized on the website. My concern is, in the first paragraph, it states that all of our, whether you're school choice or not, should all be treated equal. And I heard that everybody in the school choice was going to be pushed to the Phillipston Memorial. That being said, my son's been in this school for two years, so I don't understand how that can be said if all children are supposed to be treated equal. So I guess I don't, looking for a little clarity on that, how can we change that?
Okay, we do typically take comments, not questions, but I think you'll find that we will address your question during our regular business meeting. So we, we will get to that, it is, it is coming, so.
Okay, I just appreciate it, I just, yeah, it's a concern of ours, so.
And we appreciate your comments.
I know a lot of the audience here has that same concern in how the kids are being pushed around.
And you'll find that most of the committee has the same concern, so.
We just want to make sure that our voices are heard too, so.
Yes, well, we appreciate you, we appreciate everybody coming, so thank you. Is there anyone else at the mic?
Hello, my name is Yalimar Day, I reside in Gardner as well, I'm two children choice, school choice here. It's kind of a question, but I guess, since I can't really ask a question, you can answer is, I haven't been stated as to if this thing with school choice, if it does go through, if it's until the unforeseeable future, if it's just for this year, what does this mean for my child, for the, for my two children in the future? Because I haven't seen anything stating that information. So that's one of my concerns that I have regarding that situation as well. Amongst the fact that, again, like he said, we're supposed to be treated the same, so. That was the only thing that I think I have so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just shout?
Yeah, it's hard to get that...
Yeah, just announced, you know, I'm Julie Kitty, I live in Templeton,
and my major concern is class size, not necessarily just for kindergarten or just for fifth grade. I had the luxury of sitting in on the finance meeting and heard the back and forth, and really appreciate the outcomes of that meeting, so thank you for that. I have a third grader, or he will be a third grader, and twenty-seven kids in third grade is too many. You know, we're talking about kindergarten, twenty kids in kindergarten is too many, which absolutely is. And we would love to all have the resources to do as much as possible. And I really feel, and I hope I'm not overstepping, or speaking out of turn here, but I feel like the parents in this community didn't understand what the consequences were of the override failing. And I think that had we known what we would be facing today when that vote happens, I think all of us would be out there at the picket line with signs and signing petitions. I will need that, if I need to. I'm going to say that over and over again, this is ridiculous, we need smaller class sizes.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Nate Wilson, I'm in Winchandon, my son, it'll be his second year. My concern, actually I have a couple, but the impact is, my son goes to this school because of our work schedules. So with my niece, she's going to be in one school, my son's going to be in another. There's no way, there's no possible way. I don't know if you guys ever considered that, that the fact that people are in this district is because of work schedules and childcare. The other thing is, is you guys had a budget meeting. What your contingency plan on is, is what, forty-three students at a district? Say ten, fifteen, twenty of those kids say, you know what, we're going to go to our district. What's your plan then? Yeah, it's just, it's just things to think about, and same thing with treating everybody fairly, it's, I get to tell my son that, oh, you can't go to school with all your friends because you've got to go to this rundown school? It's, it's ridiculous, so, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, there'll be one more.
Hello, my name is Marcy Dodge, I live in Winchandon, and I have twin daughters that are entering third grade. They have been in the Templeton district since preschool for a total of five years. They need separate classrooms. They cannot physically be in the same space for the entire day. It is not in their best interest, it's also not in the best interest of the staff or the other people around them, I guarantee you. They are identical twin girls. It's not conducive for any learning environment, especially theirs. And I was told that moving them to Phillipston so that, since there's only one class per grade, they will have to be in the same classroom. And I was told that they would not be accommodated and separated and put into TC so that they could be in separate classrooms. Which, the other sets of twins that I know in the district will be able to have that accommodation. So again, being treated fairly, equally, all those things that, and especially being a part of the community that they have been in since they were three, is, is really concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I want to assure all of you that if, for anyone who sat in this meeting prior, I think we mirrored every one of the comments that you all have made. And I want to assure you that we take your comments and feedback very seriously, and we will attempt to address this as best we can. Next up, if we, I've left it on here, if we did have a representative from the NDEA, I don't see anybody, so we'll skip over that. The first item under ongoing business is our FY20 budget, which includes our 112th budget status. And once again, I'll ask Ms. Geister to just give an update on the 112th, the number, and what it means for us.
We received a letter from the Associate Commissioner, Jay Sullivan, and it is giving us, it says, I'm authorizing the Narragansett Regional School District to continue its operations and spend up to one million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars in each month of fiscal year 2020. And then it says, the interim monthly budget is 112th of the regional school district's budget for the current fiscal year. When you take that number, one million, six, and multiply that by twelve, it is our current June fourth certified FY20 budget number.
And that means then, the discussion that we had last week before we knew this was our number, that other potential cuts we made have needed to take based on the 112th situation we don't have to address, because we are funded with the configuration that we have at the level we are. The, just procedurally, for any of you who have kept up and followed our little bouncing ball of procedural steps, we are waiting for the town of Templeton, for their special town meeting, to vote and find out if our budget is approved. And once it is certified, I'm sorry, it's funded by the town, then we would have a certified funded budget. If the town of Templeton does not fund the budget, then we would move to a district-wide town meeting. So that would be the next step, but we are waiting still to have an approved and funded budget. It would be the town of Templeton will wait, yes.
Is there a date for that meeting?
July eighth, July... In the editorials.
What time?
It was set for standard seven P M, and there's two more articles.
So with that being...
Thanks.
No, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I know it is out on your, I think, so it's online, and so it's out a bunch of places too, if I want one to search for it. With that being said, I guess we don't really need to have much of the 112th conversation, we can move right into other budget discussions. As part of our finance meeting, the finance subcommittee has made a couple of recommendations that we've motioned on as a first step to see what we can do to help resolve some resource issues. And additionally, we will be setting another meeting for, it looks like maybe next week. We'll get to that after the fact. I just don't want to lose track of, of our motions, so we'll do those first. We currently have a nursing physician that is open, and the intent is to utilize monies from that open physician due to retirement, reassign nurses. There would be one in each building, and utilize the funds from that nursing physician to fund specifically a fifth grade teacher at Templeton Center to help alleviate some of the large class sizes within Templeton. So that motion would be made in our finance committee, I would look for someone to redefend the motion here.
Some move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment, anyone to clarify anything I said? Because I didn't talk about what that means for what student assignment.
I'm having second thoughts on that, only because if we increase the enrollment in TC, I really think that it's going to need two nurses, but that's just my thought.
Well, the comment that I did want to make, which is requiring the purpose, the reason we look at the difference is because that was one of the highest class sizes that we have been covering now. So that's why I'm looking to do a prepared decision.
Am I correct that we asked for data on the nurses to see?
Not, not yet.
We did not?
And not in this meeting. We mentioned it in the last, but we haven't, we haven't done it.
Oh, no, I didn't have any discussion, I was just responding that that could happen, that could be reassigned elsewhere. But we still would have the numberless.
I guess the question that I have for Dr. Kazman is if we did add this extra resource in fifth grade, would that allow the fifth grade school choice students that are currently assigned to Templeton to stay in Templeton?
Yes, with the caveat that the eleven or so school choice students are on a list that have not, again, they're on a school choice waiting list, that those numbers, I think it's eight, I think it's a grand total. No, no, so if, again, if we, the teacher approved, then those eight fifth grade students that were assigned to Templeton originally would go back. That will lower the number significantly to those, and we'd have to make that number up, so to speak, off the, from the waitlist.
So I think we then said that we'll, next week when we come back, we will discuss that piece of it. that piece of it, because we want to just get a little more information on the waitlist. But yes, so is that everyone's understanding of that full motion? Just want to make sure we're clear. Okay, any other discussion or comments on that particular? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
I'll bet I abstained.
It's two abstentions, but the motion does pass. And I, what I think that I'm hearing is that we would like, if we could get some additional data maybe, I don't know if you've got resources in, just to understand at TC, based upon information we have, what's the risk of not having a second nurse? I think we had a very good, healthy discussion earlier about the kind of things.
Yeah, we need to know, if the kids are insulin pumps, all of the things, all the needs. Not that we need to know who they are.
Yeah. All right. The second item, and I'm going to actually jump ahead to our school choice vote, only because this is the second item, and then we're going to have, go back to the FY '20 budget because they're all interrelated, I thought we should have just had them as one agenda item, that we as a committee, we've decided as a finance committee, is that we would open up another kindergarten class at Templeton Center. This is based on the fact that we currently have 32 students interested in coming to kindergarten in this district. That what we would do is we would accept 20 school choice children for kindergarten at Templeton Center. We would accept seven, is that correct? Seven school choice children in Phillipston. And the funding that we would receive from the school choice monies would pay for that teacher. So it's a self-funded position. The thought process is, is as those kids matriculate through the years, the teacher would move with them, obviously we reassess every year, but that will bring children into the district who want to be here. So I would entertain a motion to take that vote. And what would happen, just procedurally, July 15th, we have a lottery of all of the children that are in our school choice pool for kindergarten, and by lottery, you would draw who they are and the steps, standards we have to follow. So I would entertain a motion for that.
You will make a motion, but if it was a teacher and a parent?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, teacher and a parent. Thank you. Yes. So I would entertain a motion to utilize the funds for a teacher and a parent. I would recommend, no one?
Can I say so long?
Lincoln says so long.
So long.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Again, that's to open 20 spots in Templeton Center, seven spots in Phillipston for kindergarten, hiring a teacher and a parent with the school choice monies that those spots could bring in. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carers unanimous. So those are the two motions that came out of our finance meeting. We had a lot of questions, and I just want to clarify the follow-up that we were looking for for next week, and then we'll schedule next week's meeting. We have a couple of pieces of business and more conversation. We wanted to find out information on the high school, middle school secretary that shared, just, you know, what are the duties, what's the risk of doing something with that position? I don't know what that would be, but what it would be. We talked about the medical needs over at Templeton Center. We probably should look at that in all of the buildings to reconfirm, to see if every building has needs. Was there any other information that the committee wanted Dr. Kazman and Ms. Geist to pull together for us to be able to review for?
We did talk about the additional school choice kids on the pending applicants and getting some information on that. I think we should look more to see whether we're interested, if they're still interested.
Anything else that I don't think of the data that we need? I just want to, just because we do have quite a crowd here, one of the things that the committee discussed in the finance meeting was looking at how could we, you know, what can school choice, the survey list potentially do for us? So that's what we're trying to find out, how many children there are. And we added children, what are the risks? We don't have two nurses and we only have one, there's risks there financially. We can't live off the school choice, but I think if someone's saying, you know, desperate times, maybe we need to look at that. So we really need to understand the dynamics of all of the potential revenue streams and be able to make an informed decision. Any other questions or comments at this point? The only other thing that I do want to just point out is that we had originally deferred having a discussion about the regional agreement, voting on, on that whole 10% rule, isn't even on the agenda tonight because of the things that changed. So that is kind of tabled for now because it's really not something that we need to address at this moment. If in fact we do, then we will just address it at that point in time. But I know there were several people in the community that were asking about that. It's not on here, it's kind of tabled until we might need to address it. Anything else on budget?
Is it safe to say that we're working to try to keep the present school choice kids in the buildings they're in?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're trying to do that, so we're working.
It's, it's an interesting balance, I think. If you go back and you watch our previous meeting, you know, of me doing this, we've got this very delicate balance between student needs, student resources, and revenue streams and the potential liability of us relying too heavily upon the school choice. I think as anyone knows, you know, free cash in a town, you don't use it on going expenses, that's similar to your school choice. But, you know, we will take a look and make decisions because I think the point that someone made, and it was echoed by everyone, maybe not in the same words, is, you know, we have a commitment, once a student joins this district, you know, they're ours. Your kids are our kids. And we have 1,436 somewhere, whatever that number is, they're all our kids. And we need to make the decisions best for everybody, and we will try to do our best based upon the constraints of the dollars that we have. And, you know, we'll do our best for you. Anybody else on budget issues?
Do you take any questions?
School committee comments? Are there any comments? Mrs. Hudson?
I have a few comments. So first, I wanted to address something that the man up in the hat said about, he's from Winchester, and he said something about having the school choice go to this rundown school. And I, I had to snicker because it's funny that he say that, because if you all remember that TC used to be our rundown school, and actually Phillipston used to be the better school because it had, you know, the gym and, you know, the big ball field and all that other stuff. And now that we have our new school being built, it's going to be our, you know, our great school in Templeton. And now Phillipston will be the rundown school. So that kind of caught me a little funny, actually. And, and the other thing is that we have all these Phillipston people that are coming out in droves now, saying that they want to keep their school and it's such a great school, and we have other people that are saying that it's a rundown school. So that just kind of hit me, that's funny. The other thing was, you know, we're, we're put in this position as we are right now because the people in Templeton have voted down our fully funded budget. And we wouldn't be cutting staff and moving children if it weren't for the Town of Templeton voters that either didn't come out and vote for the fully funded budget, or they just didn't know, or didn't care, or just thought somebody else would do it. The other thing that I'm really, really disappointed in is the selectmen in Templeton. I'm sure a lot of people in town don't know that June 30th was the last day that Templeton could have used their free cash for the use of the budget. So by having the Templeton special town meeting on July 8th, that, I'm sorry, 18th, that, that's taking away the option of using free cash during the town meeting if, if they so choose to use any free cash to use for our budget. You know, if they didn't want to try to cut the police or the fire or any other thing that they wanted to cut, they now took that away from the town voters, which I am a Templeton representative. So I am very disappointed in that decision to move the special town meeting into July and not before June 30th. So just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you. And any other comments?
I think it's important that all the Templeton parents that have concerns show up at this meeting on July 18th. And we could, we appreciate all the help you can give us because we've been working very, very hard for the children in this district. And we volunteer our time, and it's been a lot of hours.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say is, I know that there are a lot of emotions either way on the two schools, and really what I want to say is, I don't think, I think we have a great team of educators there, and I don't think there's a difference on what you're actually in. I think you have a great educators throughout the district here, and I just don't keep that on the road, and I think that, you know, the children, this district, really a great effort from our staff, our teachers, and the entire district. Get that over there.
Yes, our school system is the pride and joy of this town. Actually, that's all we have here in Templeton. This is the big thing, the school. And it's the biggest budget, and it's, it is what it is.
I just want to reiterate the fact here that we tried to push forward a budget that was representative of everything we all voted for and wanted, we were funding both schools, all the schools appropriately. That failed, we've been bussing our luck trying to figure out how to make this work. Obviously, we've made everybody happy, you know, that we're going to, but we're not.
And I want to say, we, you know, we did have two budget hearings, well presented. And I remember one, we had absolutely no one in the audience, so it's, and I think that laid out our case, the presentation, and if anyone had looked at that, they would completely understand the position we're in, so.
Just because I feel the need to, I understand what you're saying, but in the sense of Phillipston Elementary School, it is a great school. It's, I know it has things that need to be worked on, but they do have it laying around, they do have the bath, it's a great school and it has, you know, that's where, and school choice, but if the kids end up there in a great school, it has great features, it's just, I don't know.
I wasn't saying it. I wasn't saying it to, I just thought it was funny because Templeton Center used to be the rundown school.
It hurt a little.
Well, I didn't say it that way to make you feel bad.
I have one more thing, and I want to say publicly, thank you to everybody on this committee, and for our administrators and our business manager for working so hard for so long and to continue to do so. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank my colleagues, because I was out of the country for the two weeks that these hearings happened, and they were very emotional. I can understand the needs and the feelings, but these people had to sit with their best intentions, putting forth what could, all that they could do with what they had. So I want to thank them for continuing and doing the hard work of the school committee while I wasn't able to be there. But I did watch YouTube, so I know what kind of work we did.
You did on vacation?
I did.
She says camera has 20 pounds.
Because people, but people who are sitting here don't do any of this lightly. I mean, this school choice that obviously we're trying to find a way around, but it means a whole different plan, was not something anybody would have wanted to do. And, you know, they, they don't do this, they only, we only had so much money, and these options then came through. But we do appreciate hearing from the parents of the students because that's why we're here. So I thank very much for your work as well. And we will try to get through this the best way we can.
May I make a brief question?
No, we, we've, this is our meeting.
It takes about two seconds. It's just an idea for you guys for the notifications, that town meetings are public knowledge. In today's day and age of social media, please post on social media that you would like to see participants. I just went to the Town of Templeton's website, the only thing that they have on there is the annual budget meeting in May.
That's the Town of Templeton, not the school committee.
If you have some influence, if you would like to support.
I would, I would recommend that maybe you contact them and ask them for such, but we will take your comments to heart here and see that maybe other ways we can do better at pushing our meetings out, so.
It's really nice to see people at our meetings. It's good.
I do want to acknowledge the comment this gentleman just made. He said, "The school system gives them plenty of knowledge and notification of what's going on, and that's what we're proud of." So Phillipston is mostly here tonight, and they are a part of Templeton when it comes to funding their school. So if you have a comment like that, we will get back to the town to see if they can accommodate and get our people.
I am a Templeton resident.
Well, you are, thank you very much.
And you do have a couple of people here that probably heard you, so, but I think that even us as a district, maybe we can find other ways to try and pushing it out as well, because it is important. And we, you know, as much as it's very tense in the room because emotions are very high, we get it, what's our most valuable asset is our children, and we understand that. But we do like seeing everyone in this room and, you know, email us, call us, you know, maybe not when we're in the frozen food section of Market Basket, maybe wait till we're in the produce section to get us, or, you know, after groceries have enough. But, you know, we do appreciate the comments that we hear from every one of you. And even though we may not, and we're not able to acknowledge each and every one of you, you know, we do hear them, we do listen. So we're honored to really understand that, that really if you email us, we read that, we take it seriously, and we bring it back to our discussions as well. Did anyone else want to add? Okay, so.
I'm, I'm going to ask permission not to go on Facebook ever again.
Yeah. You are cut off.
I didn't say it didn't hurt, it's just that we hurt them.
Yes. Okay, so new business, we just have a couple of items. Professional development for school committee members. We obviously have a commitment to our own professional development, to ensure we stay on top of things. The Massachusetts, Massachusetts, thank you, thank you, has two different events. There is an equity, a summer institute equity summit that is scheduled for Friday, July 12th, from 4:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, July 13th, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And then there's a second session, 10:15 to 12:15. It's going to update on issues around equity and achievement, and also it says, "Prepare to tackle the leadership challenges of the school year ahead." You can register for one day or two days. If anyone is interested, obviously that is right around the corner. I forget what the price is, it's fairly inexpensive, and there are some handouts that I think would be very beneficial as we continue to have discussions on equity and achievement. So if anyone is interested in that, maybe Ms. Barney, if you would send an email out after the meeting and solicit an interest. The second item is, we did receive the MASC, MAS joint conference information. Early bird registration ends July 15th, it's $100 off the registration fee. Is, I don't know if anyone knows yet whether or not they're interested in going. And Jeff, I know that as a new member, you have to complete in your first year, so the new member orientation, which that, that conference has enough classes to do that. There's also charting, of course, and, of course, we can have a separate discussion on that.
What are the dates on that?
The 6th through the 9th.
Yep.
6th through the 9th.
6th through the 9th.
Yep.
I might hold this. I'll let you know next week.
Right, so, and actually, if you wouldn't mind sending just the information out, and then we'll have to look at how many are interested and what the dollars would be around that and figure out what's, how many of us can go and what our reasons would be to be if you want to go, what we can do. to be if we want to go, what we can do if we pay for ourselves and whatnot. So more on that. Other, I did just have, based upon conversations about Phillipston Building. I know that at our last meeting, I had asked Jeff if you would follow up about, with the TMS Building Committee to find out what they're doing about meeting to try and get these repairs. I've heard about two and a half million dollars in repairs are needed on the roof, Peters, and I haven't heard any kind of movement or action, so I'm hoping maybe you have an update? Is that a no?
No.
No, okay. Have they responded at all?
I got, I did get a response that I am not vaccinated.
Okay, and were they planning on meeting at all?
Uh, and right now there's no plan for, for, nobody's asked, nobody's officially asked.
Okay, I know, I know, Mrs. Geisler, you're on, do you have any other?
The response was that they don't plan to have any meetings before their special town meeting on July twentieth.
So what we're, so really we should have looked for funding at the special town meeting so that we could get these repairs underway and they're choosing not to address the repairs to this building. For what reason?
Phillipston taxpayers actually voted at the May town meeting fifty thousand dollars to repair the heating units at that school. It would be nice to have that done while school's not in session.
So failure for them to meet means we can't move forward with those plans. All right, so Phillipston residents out there, you need to contact the town hall and the Phillipston Building Committee and ask them what they are doing to make repairs to that building. I don't care if there's one kid, but there's a hundred and sixty-eight kids in that building, that building needs to be repaired because those kids do not deserve to be in a building with a leaky roof and nobody, that is unacceptable.
The school choice kids do, right?
No, okay, no.
Two and a half million dollars, okay.
I can just speak on that because I was with the people on the committee when they determined why they weren't having a meeting, but I'll wait.
Please after, yes.
It's all right, I can do it another time.
That would be fine, thanks. If you'd like to, no, that's, that's fine. So as I said, I just put that plea out there, we have been pushing on our end and it is not fair for those kids, whoever they are, they're in that building, not to have a building that the roof doesn't leak and doesn't have heat. Any, we don't have any correspondence, I don't believe, so we're good there. Okay, so we've said that we want to set another meeting for next week, hope we could all pull out our calendars.
Madam Chair, I'm not here, so, but I, I can. So just, gentle, I guess, if you could.
Okay, so if we were to meet next week, what would work best for you if we had to pull you in for some, or can we make it for the Monday? Well, see, the fifteenth is the day we have to pull, so if we're ready to, to address all of school choice on the fifteenth and do a poll after our meeting, I suppose we could, we could do it the fifteenth if you're back then. I, I hate to call you back from vacation.
Um, no, I, I'm at the conference, so what I can do is maybe the eleventh, I can just come back the eleventh.
Okay, it's Thursday. I actually have a conference.
I can do, yeah. I'm seventy-four on Thursday.
We'll have to do the fifteenth.
Okay, so if we do, if we can do the fifteenth, that's a Monday, but again, we need to be prepared to.
Are the rest of the people okay with Monday? Yeah.
Maybe.
Monday I'm good.
Depends on what time.
Six, five, five.
What do you have on Monday?
Nothing.
At night I'm fine. I'm okay at night.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, definitely. What time, like five or later, we'd be good, Lord?
Mondays, Mondays, I just, I can, Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Monday the eighth.
It's Monday the eighth.
Oh, the eighth.
I'm just saying, I, because I'll just not, you know.
All right, you're okay with that? Monday the eighth?
Mm-hmm.
It's not really a problem.
No, it's, it's important, we have to do it. It's fine, it's important.
So what time would you like to meet? Since you're putting off something, do you have a preferred role here later?
I, I think that honestly, at that point, it won't matter, so I think that if, if, I'm sorry, five o'clock is great.
Do we, do we want to do the finance meeting first or just go to?
Do we want to do another finance meeting?
You have that info that you may want in the finance.
And can we just discuss that in our regular meetings?
Yeah, it's open either way, it's okay.
So five o'clock, July eighth. And that'll be a regular school period meeting and we're in a little discussion really on the FY20 budget as well as school choice, so we can vote on whatever we need to. And then after that meeting adjourns, then we would have, you'll have a week to get ready for whatever school choice, I guess lottery, I think they're calling it, takes place, so that'll give you more time to work on that.
Yes, Madam Chair, is the location of that meeting?
It'll be here. Okay, so July eighth, Monday, five o'clock, here. We have no reason to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got it, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn seven twenty-seven six.